We've been through roll call and our roll call was even more full. Cross Tennessee and Charlotte was joining us today. And we had this way to have an executive session, we did have an executive session. And then we came back here and to blend into other committee. And now we've got, we've got to start the rest of the meeting. Joined by Joey Russo, our president Joey, President. Mr. President. Joe? So with that, we need to, I want to put in the regions that's black. Black regions. Uh, now we move to the go to the order, this is the board's mission. Would anyone like to add to the silliness that since the beginning of the school year, the people love it. Not people who have children, but everyone else. And I think as a board, we are so grateful for the students and staff and teachers who all come together. We are here for all of them. Say that and appreciate all that goes into bringing everyone here to the purpose of education and the beautiful place. Thank you all. Would anyone like to add to all this, there's so much going on already. But so in community. Alright, well then we'll move to the opportunity for the public to be heard, this is in two point one, any member of the public who'd like to be heard, we have a hearing and we want you to come to play to be heard. Joey, would you like to open your more presentative and conversation part of the meeting with the student or member of the board?
Alright, so. Uh, E-Holp has its own, I think it is, we're still getting a little bit, there's like you what this communication, like the way we're just trying to work out this is something that's clear to all of us. All sports actually, it's just started up again, I would say. I think every single team or person.
You mean that, every team?
All except for one.
Everyone. Most teams lose a games item.
That's all I have.
I'll say I got questions at home about the losing hall pass system. My child was immediately suspecting that we were doing this to collect data on hall pass usage and see if we could make changes. I'm concerned, concerned about, given the climate, about different biological functioning in terms of using it, the bathroom use.
It doesn't do it, bathroom use is gonna work.
No, but it does track.
It just tracks where the sweets are, but no one's looking at, so can I take the super niche core? Want to talk about real quick?
Yeah.
Alright, let's start by hall pass real quick.
We're, we're gonna jump down to, to that.
Yeah, it's super niche before, so E-Holp has this coming. And as you know, it's something that high schools looked into last year, and then they purchased and when we piloted that through the year. So none of that data is being utilized to track students' bathroom passes, usage or anything like that. It's really being tracked just to make you understand where students are throughout the year. So is a student in the hallway who has the ability to be in the hallway? Are they cutting classes or not? So our new security manager said, it's great, I know if I see a kid, I know that you're supposed to be in the hallway. If I don't, I ask where they're supposed to be and I help them get to that spot. So it's a tracking mechanism to be able to help support that, not to be able to track how many students are going to the bathroom because we're not alone, right? It will help though, and I will give you an example, and it's a personal one. I had a child who'd struggled with bathroom usage. And when I went to the bathroom in the elementary school, they were going 10 to 15 to 20 times a day. Right, so for us, it was, it was a struggle, right? It was something we had to struggle with, work with, and there were reasons behind it, and the school's unbelievably supportive, and I'm not saying that because of super niche. I'm really saying because they've been raising the job supporting the child as they would any child. But having that data, and they were tracking that data, was very helpful, and that would be the only time that would be used would be like during a time where you're doing multiyear system supports. And you wanna say, I have a child who's missing classes and they're missing 25 classes in a day, well, at least that can pull it up every question, we're not gonna look and see where they're going. We're looking to see how many times they were probably class. That would only be if it gets to the NTSSS issue where there is a concern with that child has been brought forward by a staff member to the team. Other than that, it's just really, it's some electronic earth when they're in there.
Yeah, so I, I was, I mean, kinda saying that to the chief.
Yep.
I, I think it's a great system for, like, if we have a building emergency, right? And everyone has to leave to teach and to students in the bathroom and administrators, someone's gonna know, okay, we have a student who left the classroom, someone in the building will be finding outside. But for that purpose, I think.
That's what E-Holp has. And again, I think the private programs are up at high school this year, and they're gonna see how it works and work together on it. And see how it functions, some schools are doing it now, they really enjoy it. You know, it's kind of positive for other districts, and we're gonna make sure that we put it inside, and the district has E-Holp asked.
Yes, we do.
Yep.
And I do actually like it very much. It took a little bit of getting used to kind of like Joyce and how it works, but one thing that I like about it is, say, students are asking to go to the library or something during the free period. It will come up and say that basically there's too many people in the library that a student can't go. Which is nice, that way, that way the person in the library doesn't deal with, you know, 10 kids coming in one after the other and having to turn them all around. So I personally do like it, but yes, like morning, I didn't have a child at home asking about the tracking of that throughout the building. And I did explain, yes, that there's safety reasons that this could be very helpful.
Any other questions? Um, it was funny today, it's, we found a hiccup that Joey needed to pass back, and I have no access to E-Holp pass, so I go, I don't know how to do this, like, if they have the pass. So, um, any questions on the E-Holp asks, that I can always have a presentation about the high school, because I don't know what's on about it, really, it is high school.
But not most.
Not most. Okay. So moving on to opening updates, I just wanna state that, you know, there are so many people, Rachel, as you said, that hit the school up and running for where it needs to be. And, you know, I first and foremost want to thank everybody who works over the summer. And it's not just the people who are needed to work over the summer either. You know, there are a lot of people that put in time and effort in like reading magazines and articles and looking at their lesson plans, people put in time on the craft even when they're not working, so I wanna thank all those people, I wanna thank our facilities, our bus drivers, our transportation staff, our maintenance people, all of our administrators, all of our secretarial staff, Jim, my missing your business office staff because you guys didn't stop. There's a lot of work that has to go into it, our counselors, our scheduling, our administrators, all the people who came in for committee work over the summer, all the people who did the deal over the summer. So there's a lot of work in those two months just to get us to this point to open. And then when we get to open, you know, all of our staff and everyone who's coming in, all of our teachers, we have a smooth opening because of the fact that we have so many amazing professionals here working in the best interest of students and working as a team. So hats off to everybody who really did make it, just a very smooth opening and give us right back to where we are, can't believe it's Monday and it feels like it's already been an hour, so we're right back in. So capital project update, some good news and bad news, always at the same time. Good news, the good news is that the last brick has been lit. So now the transportation retaining wall out there, so the last brick is done. Now they have to put the cap blocks on and fencing and everything else, but they're moving forward. Other good news, we were behind schedule. We were behind schedule about five weeks. Our construction manager worked with our general manager, and we're back on schedule right on where the schedule is. So real positive things happening, like, you know, UW marks have been great. That's our construction manager making sure that they keep us on track and watching the schedules and working with everybody, keeping us informed of all the issues that occur. But we are on track for as we've done, and the same, that is the goal that we can transition through so that transportation facility is done. If you notice, cement has been laid and the foundation work is being done over there, so we're getting ready for the building to go up. We really need the building to be up in winter so we can do a lot of the work in it at the end of the season. So we're getting there, but it's definitely, it's done some work. Any questions on the transportation facility? Bad news, I'm about to get to it right now. I just wanna make sure I get this up in the morning. So as we talked about at facilities meeting a couple of weeks ago, we've been trying to figure out the best way to be able to schedule and work out the elementary school project to get it all done in a timely manner with the least amount of impact on the building and also to get some of the because that is all components of the project. Unfortunately, um, there's only one real sound option to make this happen, and I'm gonna kind of go over it now. So next year, we're gonna start the work as soon as humanly possible at the elementary school. What that means is, if we get the transportation facility done, that means the work in the transportation garage that's there, we can start doing that right away. So if we get it done in June, we can start working on the transportation facility in June, it's completely locked off from the rest of the building, so it's very simple for us to do. We are going to start the rest of the work, um, probably June 26th, as soon as the last day of school hits, we'll probably already have staging and other issues coming up. But it is there, that we'll have that work going on. Everything you see in the orange is work that is going to, is something in the building that is going to get touched or done over the summer of 2025. The majority of the work is gonna be done in the summer of 2025, that includes the majority of the site work. Again, for people, when I say site work, I'm gonna, we stated one more time, anything outside of the building, so anything outside is considered site work. So the, um, the drainage, maybe a little building or a storage facility, the driveways, sidewalks, all of that is considered to be site work. The retaining wall for the river, also. That's also, also get done, my construction manager tells me, I say this is a lot, he says, no, it's really not. He goes, this is comparison, this is a smaller project in comparison to others. So that is all gonna get done. The problem comes that the rest of that work, so that, the basement or first floor, which is in purple, that is the current cafeteria, the current kids club area, the overflow room, the PTOT room, the transportation area currently, the side entrance and the transportation facility, there is way too much work to get done in that timeframe. You cannot do that all in two months, so we are going to stem that out for another three months on top of it. So that work is not gonna get done until November. We can close off that building, we've worked with everybody that they need to, and we're still continuing it. So where you see it being purple and there's a little red line, I'm gonna zoom in even further for you, it's best to push it then, and whatever work. And I do put this on public because again, I don't want to have all the maps and everything up for everybody. So that's why it's, you're not publicly giving the maps, so. But you do have this access to it, that red line is, there's an entrance way, that little red line, if you can see it, will be a close off wall. And then we are going to close off that whole area, there's still gonna be entrance ways, we're still in compliance for ingressing, you know, in and out of the building. The one major thing that's gonna change is the cafeteria. The cafeteria is gonna be blocked off, and that's gonna move to the small gym. We are working with the department of health and our food service people to make sure that we can do like basically catering company under there. And they will set up and make sure cafeteria, we've tiny done it already during COVID issues, we're just gonna serve out of there. They will do all the cooking in the high school and then be able to cater it down. It's gonna be three months of a lot of work and a lot of impact onto the building. With as much minimal impact on the instructional staff as possible, but in the end, results are gonna be great, right? We're gonna get all these new facilities, we're gonna have all the extra rooms, and, you know, it's gonna update that building nicely. Again, one of the number one reasons we can't do it in time is the specificity. There is so much extensive specificity that has to occur, that building has to be shut down. We cannot do it on second shift, you know, we really need to be able to do it during first shift, which means the first few months is that, and afterwards, there is a lot of structural work that needs to occur. So that takes time as well. By the time we're into September, October, November, it basically finishes. So the structural work, the asbestos work has been done, it's gonna be finished and we're making sure that it brings up.
So that, so that means two really is gonna be completed in November?
Yes. That is, by November 25th is what they're telling us. And then we will work through the transitions of how people use those spaces, and even just because they're there doesn't mean people have to go to them because they're already gonna be functioning in the building, of course cafeteria will be, you know, positive. But some of the teachers and stuff, we wanna make sure that they transition very carefully, you know, so they don't feel any added stress to them. As you can see, there's a red line, that red line will be the fence that goes along that area, so nobody can get into it during that timeframe. During the school year, during summer, and you're gonna see this open organ, that building is gonna be completely off limits. So during July and August, and then we're gonna transition from August to September, we will not have access to that building. It's gonna be a huge liability, it's like the outside, the inside, you just will not be able to get it, so it will be constructed. It's the playground, it's everything, yeah, the facility, the playground, because they're gonna be doing all of that drainage work. I mean, as many people know, we've had multiple cymbals over the years. All that drainage is failing, so they have to rip all the drainage out, some of it goes right underneath one of the playground areas, we don't have to rip off all the playground, but there's one part that will have to be taken out, it's, um, put back in, it's very, it's, it's a one part, so, but they're not really huge. There is one part that's gonna have to be taken care of, which again, the construction managers and construction people do, and they have all the money doing those things. And then we'll transition that. One thing I wanna make sure that we kind of go over is, there's another dark purple area. That is the first floor stairwell. That stairwell will be getting done during the summer. The next stairwell is gonna be pink, that's the rest of it, from like second, you know, from the top of the second floor up. Those are definitely get done in the summer of 2025. So the real failing, rusted part, then we have to do the majority of the work in, that's gonna be going away in the summer, the rest of it's gonna be phase three. Another good thing about doing it in like this kind of third phase is the majority of the work is done, it can get well done, and the site work, we're gonna have to paint the driveways and all of the different components of it, if we don't like it, the beauty part is we have a whole year to test it out. So if we wanna change the pattern and flow, they're gonna put another second coat on and do another painting job, so we at least have a year, it looks positive. We have a year to test the part that you see. Any questions on that? And I know I kind of went over it more in detail, facilities, and we did have our construction manager and architect in facilities. Any questions?
I think it was nice to hear from Paul, who was very, um, him do this.
When we first, we were sitting down and we were like, oh my gosh, how are we gonna do this? We called, we texted Paul and Paul goes, don't worry, I have this. So, I mean, Paul, if you wanna call it, Paul's a cafeteria, food service director, and he really has been amazing in making sure we get all this work done, Jim's working on it, making sure that everything we need are directed facilities, taking care of it, so any of those things are gonna be taken care of, not really have a year to be, you know, I am also the plan. Alright, any other questions on that? Before I go into the next thing, I wanna talk about board messages and newsletters, something I wanna bring up to the board. So we are doing free newsletters out to the whole community. And I'm gonna start working on that, so again, we do the district one, they go off through the messenger, but then we do the ones that are sent. The ones that we do first are a two, basically two pager, to be able to cut, save on money. So not a ton of messages going on there, but if the board has anything specific that they wanna think about, that they wanna make sure that we share with our community, if they want the community to know, we can definitely do a little teaser or add something into it that's there, so I want you to love your thing about it, and anything you wanna add, we can talk about adding those components into it. And then we're with communication that we drive with each other, so we have board meetings. The first one's going out in the fall, we're trying to set the time, so we're thinking mid to late October is when this is gonna go out. And then we do another one in the straight, and then we'll do another one by the budget season. The budget season one is pretty much already, you know, drafted for each year here, but the other two things to think about if you do. And now the last thing. So in July last year, we gave out a survey to our students, grades four through 12, and it was a couple of different surveys. So Panorama is the, the survey system that we utilize, over 13 million surveys are given out nationwide from Panorama. That's yearly, if you do it, go up to the state of Rhode Island, they actually gives it out completely for every single student in every, in every, across the state, that's what they use as their benchmarking. So a lot of different places utilize these systems, we use this as our baseline information for next year regarding a couple of different areas. One was the second step program, and the other was student engagement and social emotional and student culture. You know, a few things I wanna go over with the data and kind of give a given overview of it. One, so what you're seeing today is big 30,000 foot view. Our administrators have this data, they are gonna be digging down with their teams and building leadership teams on deeper levels, understanding of this, to be the help vehicles and understanding where their staff and their want to go to help support students. So they're gonna be digging down deeper, I'm giving you the big, kind of where we are as a district kind of view. Before I begin, I think the number one part for you to understand is, you know, it's a tool for reflection, it's a flash. Right, that's what data is, especially perception data, it gives us an understanding of where people are, it has us look at it, it is not a hammer. It's not something we say, oh my gosh, we have a problem, or this is bad, and that's really any data, we're not using data to be negative. We're using data to shine a flashlight, to look at it and then understand how we can continuously converse and build on our organs that we do, it helps us adjust. So anything negative that you do see here, please understand, it's not negative. It's an area of growth, it's something that a flashlight is put on, and we're looking at the perception data to be able to. And that's with any data that we utilize. So I'm just, I wanna teach you a little bit on how the survey works. So it's set up with basically five questions. Not the group, you know, so if you ask how respectful is this teacher toward you, again, this is an example, it's not what it is, and it's always gonna be part of a larger topic. Not at all respectful, slightly respectful, somewhat respectful, quite respectful, and extremely respectful. You have the two top ones and the two bottom ones are the ones that are utilized, the one in the middle is not. That's your anchor choice, so when we say least favorable or, you know, or unleast favorable or not as favorable, it's the two bottom and the two top. The one in the middle is not one that you utilize, that's the anchor to it, so if kids are picking that one, that's not the one that we're gonna utilize for the data. We're gonna use the most favorable one to be able to use in our data. And I can give you an example of it, and I have an example put in, and I wanna make you that, kind of understand, that's how the design, this survey is designed itself, and the way that Panorama sets it up. Again, Panorama is developed through Harvard and is utilized in the nation.
So if it were a numerical scale, is somewhat respectful to be zero, and then you have like one, two, or three?
Right, and that is one here, right. Yes, it's a new. So they fixed this, we're trying to work that out, there's a glitch in a little bit of this. So as you can see, this is a straight four through eight, yet we have one person in the high school paying it. It's a glitch, we've been trying to figure out what if it's cheaper, we did not have a student in the high school take this, this survey. So there's no demographic, so again, we're not quoting from our system, any demographic data is, is on detail by the student. So what grade are you in, the student has to put the degree. We're not linking it to our system at this point in time, it's something that we talked about with the board, it's all student choice and other data that there's currently. So Board of Elementary split 141 responses, Board of Middle split 260 responses. And this is the aligned second step, which last year was our first time doing the second step, we wanted to get a baseline to see where our students were, and it is in serving June. Couple of things when you're looking at this, these are the big scale topics, each big topic, so self-management, positive feelings, growth mindset, self-efficacy, challenging feelings and emotional relations have a subset of questions that go along with it, and those are the ones that we're gonna be sharing with the leadership teams to be able to make sure they dive into. If you look at some of the percent favorable, everything is 83%, 79, 73, 70, 61, and 60%, all very, very positive. And if you look where we are nationally, we're at an 80 to 99% out for all of those topics. So it really shows that the staff down there are really strong in work in social emotional learning, this isn't anything new, right? Now it's just second step, but they've already been doing this work, you know, not only our social workers and, you know, counselors, our, our teachers have also been doing a lot of this work as well. It's just reinforcing that work that we're doing now.
Where did the students take this?
They took it in class, yep, they took it in class. So here's an example of challenging feelings, and I'll read it, because it's a little bit difficult to understand, but here is, if you wanna dig down deeper into what some of those questions would look like. During the past week, how often did you feel mad? Almost never, 16%, once in a while, 39%, sometimes 31%, again, that's the zero component, as I already said, frequently and almost always. And then if you look during the past week, how often did you feel lonely? During the past week, how often did you feel sad? And during the past week, how often did you feel worried? Again, these questions are geared towards fourth and fifth graders, they do change as they go on towards, you know, athletics. One of the things that we like to do is we look at this, and if it's 55%, that's considered a favorable response, believe it or not. 70% or higher is considered extremely favorable. Anything below 50% is a little bit more desirable, where you say, what else is going on here, how can we build upon it? Again, we always wanna move forward as best we possibly can. If we see something that's 32% or 19% or 12% favorable, then we say, okay, where is that from, and why is that like that? What can we do, what does our practices look like, how do we build upon those? And truly, really truly try to understand. So this is a disaggregated result, so what's the change from fourth grade to fifth grade? And I have this for also all the other grades that we've done this for as well. So if you notice in fourth grade, we have a lot of positives, and a little bit of changes. Fifth grade, we do have in the challenging feelings, the 7%, the 7 point difference in the, in the change in feelings. So it just, again, it's one of those things that we look at saying, I wonder what that is, what can we do with that? Build upon those questions, not the hammer saying, oh, there must be something wrong. It's, you know, there's a lot of other things, and also in fourth to fifth grade, developmentally, children start to change. And when you get into sixth and eighth grade, there's a huge developmental change. So, you know, that's all factors that go into it.
The group size of the fifth grade is a lot lower, and you answer, it's gonna change that average.
Right, right, so then I think Rachel, we were getting to the point is, this is data that can be utilized to help us, it's not the data that we're gonna say, oh, this is, this is the end result.
I could just get statistical numbers, seeing as all of us, we don't work very, very closely, that might be a difference.
So grade six through eight. Same survey. Slight differences in some of the other components of it. Again, you're still seeing pretty high results, we're still in the 60th percentile, 48 to 59 percentile for self-efficacy, again, with you know middle school students. Sometimes there's a developmental change that occurs, and again, we're gonna dig down deeper into some of these topics. But I wanna have you look at this, this is a little bit more telling in when the ways that students change in their mindset, it's something to look at, is in sixth grade, you know, it's still that kind of continuation of that K6 model, because that's when we receive it. And then in seventh and eighth grade, we start to get a shift of students, and that's a lot of change in mental, puberty, everything that comes along in seventh grade, they're shifting of our students. So those are positive areas, again, we did not do second step in seventh, eighth grade in the previous years, this was the first year that we've done it. So now that we've, now have, you know, or really have a lot of compulsion in comparison to the elementary school, so now we're gonna see what's it gonna look like as we continue these programs on, and are we gonna see some of these continuations from the elementary school up to the high school? Any questions?
Second step is the anti-vulgar.
Second step is a social emotional regulation program and the anti-vulgar program. So last year, the opposite of how we were able to get the grant for a second step, so it offers that program for students, and also gonna be anti-vulgar programs part of that. Any questions so far? So student support in the environment, this one's a little bit different. And you're gonna see a little bit different change in what you're getting when you're looking at the national percentages. So this was for our high school, we have 200 responses. We asked the students to do it in school, and Board of Middle School, we had 271 responses. Middle School and High School, we tend right down. And what we're seeing in school safety, 69%, 80 to 99th percentile for grade six through eight. School climate, that one's a little lower at 50%, and then And then self, sense of belonging and engagement, engagement is really low. Um, so those are the ones that we're kind of looking at, saying, where are they? Here's the things, when we dug deeper into it, the teacher to student interaction was high. And we were seeing really favorable responses to the teacher and student reaction. What we were seeing was the student to student interaction was low. Right? Do students help you? Do you feel supported by your fellow students? That was lower. Do you feel supported by teachers? Absolutely. That was seventy-seven percent, eighty percent. But that student to student interaction, that's something we saw with the Department of Education study as well. So we're seeing a period over of these, um, and working on it. And then engagement, do students talk about the work that you do outside of the classroom? Do they feel like it's important to them? You know, a lot of the little written commission work that they're talking about now, kind of aligned with the engagement study. So those are the things that we need to really look at, saying, where are we with our student engagement? Where are we with the perception of where our students need to engage, and what is their boost? So. I apologize, I deleted the high school page. I can send it. The high school ones, I will tell you, was much lower also. Uh, the percent favorable was lower for school climate, sense of belonging, and engagement, it was zero, zero, uh, nineteen percentile. School safety component, um, was the bottom as well. So across the board, it was the sense of, so do you, do you have fights in school? The answer is no, there have been no fights, that was eighty percentile. Um, but then you feel that someone, you know, is going to, um, come in and harm you? The answer was no, that one aside. All the others when it comes to safety, like the feeling and safety factors, and I can share those again, I apologize for not having that. And again, we're going to share these with the buildings as well, the teachers, principals will get deeper into details. Um, it really deals with engagement, sense of belonging, self-efficacy for our students, and their interaction with one another. That really is a component of it.
Can you see the questions?
I don't have them on the screen.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're going to share those with all the teachers and staff. Yes, I'm sure.
The students, I couldn't talk about this, so they noticed like the security that's in you, and they deserve any.
No, they, they like I hear. Um, if you'd like to see, like, if your person sees the data. So the safety component, if you want to see, give me one second, and I will go directly to that data. You just got to bear with me. Where is my screen? Excuse me for a second. I'm going to stop, you're right.
You can notice outside.
Okay. I'll go back. Again, this is one that we're going to share with the abilities of the staff. So grade six through twelve, shared this before. Here is the school safety questions. So how often do people disrespect other adults at your school? Thirty-seven percent favorable. How often do students get into physical fights? Eighty-five percent favorable, meaning they don't, right? How likely is it that someone from your school will blow you online? Sixty-seven percent, which again is still a higher mark, and that's favorable, meaning it won't happen, right? Not likely at all, so it'd be likely. How often do you worry about violence at your school? Almost never, once in a while, eighty-one percent favorable. So there's some very, like, when it's talking about school safety, that's not the component that they're worried about, they're more worried about student to student interaction. And that's the, that's the concerning point, where it's thirty-seven percent favorable, where people will be disrespectful to each other. How often do you worry about violence at your school? Eighty-one percent favorable.
The interesting thing in that, Frank, and I know it's, again, it's a very small shadow thing, is that for school safety, for all of them.
You're looking at the disaggregated data?
Yes. For that, it is not the same.
Right.
So there, there's a trend, it's not statistically significant necessarily, but females turn in students for not answering their gender or selecting the other. Do not have the same.
Right, right, that's why we started with the data.
Right. And is the staff's age?
No, we're, so share here, and then we were going to share the thirty thousand foot view, and then the staff, the teacher, the real leader of work. I'm going to turnkey list of them, and just in the finishings, I think, last week. So, um, because again, we have, there's a lot of work going into making sure we have all this data. They reviewed some of the, what they had been already in the summer, they have it, but then I present, we could develop this slideshow. The one I'm showing you is the one that's going to be shared out with their staff. And that's the one that really is in depth of everything that's going on.
What is the timing for the next time to come faster?
We're going to do the same, at this point, we're going to get back off the gym again, unless the building, you should clean once a gym.
I'm just curious, because forty-three of the seniors took it in June, and I've just pictured the mindset of a senior.
Maybe that's why it was all possible.
Yeah, they're all like, oh, I'm not.
And another thing, so the last thing I wanted to share, so I can share a couple more, with sense of belonging. Um, forty-nine percent, forty-two percent engagement though, that's the one that was really low. You know, how excited are you about going into your classroom? How excited are you, and again, this is child's perception, if you have a kid, you want to go to school, I will tell you, my children are coming. Right? So I'm sure that's what they wrote on their survey as they were coming back to you. So again, it's perception data from the kids, it's a flashlight, it's not a hammer. I want us to kind of remember that it's just something to talk about, something to look at, but it's not something that we're going to do. So, and the other component of this is that they give you strategies. So we have access to different strategies and components that we can work on and support with our staff. So not only, you know, bringing in our tier one interventionalist, like Rock, and working with some engagement, it's also some of these other things. So it gives you, it gives staff members the ability to click on these things, look into them, develop these processes. So strategies for engagement can keep you listening to things.
Do the staff have?
They will all have that system.
No, no, but do the staff have thoughts of their own perhaps, once they?
Exactly.
I'd be curious to hear what, what their perceptions are.
Well, that's what, so this is a tool.
And what?
It gives them some ideas, but that's what we do in leadership, things are going to work together through this, and we'll figure out. So I'm basically hands-off on the majority of all that work. Um, it's really like a double love, it's be able to help the others. Does anyone want to look at any more specific data while I have this one over?
I, I think we can say, we all would love to, but we also recognize. We can.
But, just really quick, I wanted to show you. Six through eight self-management. During the past three days, how often do you come to class prepared? Ninety-one percent favorable, ninety-three percent favorable. You know, during the past three days, how often were you polite to adults? Ninety-two percent. You know, these are really positive things that, you know, the kids perceive from themselves, and is much, much higher than other places, you know, that are there, so.
In June?
This was in June.
I'm just saying, in, in June, sometimes.
I know, but I also don't want to give out surveys all the time, and we talk about this with our staff, it's like we're taking away from the classroom instructional time. So we have to find the most appropriate time to give it, so we're not impacting. So. And I'm sure. Okay? You're welcome, I just sent that down. That's all I have?
And y'all let us know that they'll hunt for any messages when you.
Listen for next two weeks, so. Well, that and communications are going to be talking about in the board, so if you have thoughts and processes that you want to talk about it, you can just give me something over the next two weeks, and then we can continue to go on and conversation.
We will probably have a text or.
Yeah, that's what I figured, I'll leave a block available.
Okay.
Yeah, depending on how much you want, but again, thinking, again, we tried to encompass K-12, and everything that we're doing in the district in terms of goals and mission. So it will be, it'll be like what they call a tickler, something smaller, something that will add into it, but not have a lot of depth. That's it?
All right, with that, we will move, um, to section four, the approval of minutes. The minutes from, uh, the regular meeting, from our eight-eight meeting, and it's nine-nine. Things that we needed to note in the meeting, minutes. With that, would someone like to move it to approve it? Second, I'll second, all favor. Moving through to the treasure reports. Any conversation needed on this? All right, anyone like to move it? Second? I'll second, all favor. Personnel items under five point two. Anyone ask anything, move it? Moses annual reports for year, that would be.
Yes, I'm right.
Second? I'll second, all favor. Um, if it's okay with everyone, I think the bundle items five point two, five point four, the C S D certification, who knows, we set this. Any conversation needed about that? Second? All favor. We have a very visible, um, company substitute and extra favorite, and that's just a little one. Questions or conversation? Second? All favor. All right. A declaration surplus, not to item. Any moving it, or are you just very discussing it? I'll move it. Second? I'll second, all favor. And now we move to some old business, which we will, um, go all the way back to seven to six thirty-five, I believe, when we had the audit meeting. Um, Kathy, would you like to rehash the audit meeting of six thirty-five? I mean, we, we went over the, the basic overview of the audit meeting, and what the responsibilities are with the reports, I don't think we expect. We're going to be met again today for this meeting.
The curriculum today. Yes, we will be having our first meeting of the school year on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. Probably tonight, raise one thing to potentially put on your agenda.
Sure.
Internships. I did some research on this, and I was also going to research, and I guess we have to have a formal internship offering, you might.
Yes, so, so now we're, we're talking about, you know, a little bit different than that, so, um. We have an internship that you can utilize, but it has to be connected directly to the district history and a course. So let's say this student wants to do over a summer, and they want to do an internship at somewhere where we don't have a course set up. They can't do that unless they, that organization itself has agreements. So there's a whole bunch of stuff with Department of Labor and other components that go along with that. So it's kind of limiting a little bit, so we, we have the ability for students to do internships as long as it's coursework, but I'd like to fill, I'd like to fix that a little bit more. Um, but really also getting more opportunities for students outside of the school day, maybe, you know, to do on their own, it's, it's very tricky. So, for example, I got a phone call over the summer about someone doing an internship at a state agency. Um, and I work with our council, we don't have a mechanism to award credit for an internship over the summer, and we're not going to just make one really quickly, because. Um, so I said, well, no, but you can do this, you have your internship program for the people. They don't have it set up either, right? Because they haven't set up for, you know, college interns, and not for high school interns. So it's just, it's a gap that is something that we can build a time and work towards. Um, and I was just, we were having a private conversation, and I just said, let's bring that up a curriculum today, so then we can talk about it. But it's definitely something I think we should kind of explore further on how that goes. So you have the workplace internships, and you have the site coordinator, that's, we could work on that and build that back up again, but that's a little bit of a different one I'm talking about. This is more for, like, summer work or outside work too, so I think there's a lot we can discuss. Did I, did I? Yeah, then I'll go to policy, so they will get.
Um, with that, uh, Robert, would you like to cover the facilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's pretty brief, the sense we just walked, and then we walked, and then we got to see all of this.
Everything we talked about at that meeting was everything that's been over.
Yeah, I was just saying, it's pretty much just the, the plans and what's changing that. Thank you. Um, that policy also that, um, can meet again. Yeah, 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 so we met before our August eighth special board meeting, um, to go over required, you know, annual qualifications. Obviously, it was a break.
Was it regular, twenty-seven was a special?
Oh, okay, sorry, the regular meeting on August eighth, uh, we went over the required qualifications, and we talked a little bit about whether we can improve that process for future years, so that it's more electronic, like, computerless essentially. Um, so maybe we can get there, we'll, you know, probably investigate and see what we can do. But that was another meeting, and then starting on grandstand will be our first, really, able to start talking with some policies. We're going to ask some catch-up to do, 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 um, we had, um, a lot of conflicts, um, so we've got some catching up to do for March, or something like that. Wishing. Oh, yes. Okay. With that, um, we move to acceptance of donations, and thank you again to all the community members for their efforts. Acceptance of donations, we, um, have been offered twenty backpacks from Hill and Marks, and Next Step Exceed has given ten backpacks, all those supplies. Are there any thoughts or questions out there?
I just have one question for Frank, is, is there an opportunity for community efforts to donate supplies into the industry? Like if, if I had stacked some notebooks, buy orders?
There's no formal mechanism that I can.
You can recommend to teachers, mom, John, I heard that they do sometimes just. Okay.
Yeah, there's no formal mechanism, but I definitely think it's something we could look into to see if there's more. Our, here's the one concern that I have is that our community is amazing. And when you say I can do something, you'll get a thousand of them. So a mechanism, you know, so that would be my only concern is controlling that a little bit, because we want to make sure that what we're asking for, A, first, isn't our responsibility as a district to provide? Because we talked about those, and then B, and then making sure that it's things that if you get them, they're going to be of use, right? I don't want to have a thousand notebooks in them.
Or racist.
Right? Yeah, I definitely always, and I know that, you know, they always look at instruments, you know, they know that's the thing that people look into, so there's no formal mechanism, so I definitely think it's something.
So I guess contact, building infrastructure, maybe teachers, teachers, B T A, like.
Yeah, so building administrative, I think would be the first step.
Okay, thanks. Have we had input this? Yeah, I said, no, no. Would you anyone like to move the backpacks?
I was moving.
Second, all favor. Yes, our gratitude for that support. And the approval of the district plan emergency, the safety plan, which is one of the very few districts who has been doing that. Might, might you discuss this, or I'm sure. What's, move it, move it, on the second, on second, on favor. We have a school safety, the school safety meeting is more out of the gym.
Yep.
Yeah, item seven point three, refund page, moving to the other page. Um, this is new business, we really just wanted to, um, put out, next place is New York State Support Association, and they have. And they have prisons beginning October tenth, that begins what ends might end on October tenth, or it might keep going until October eleventh. We'll find out in November. We have the opportunity to send a deputy delegate, like this special meeting. And Matt has stepped forward, if the board is all going with this. We also can provide Matt with our insights on the resolutions that will be discussed. Meeting and Matt will go on behalf of the board. So, since we have a board meeting coming up, it's on the tenth. Seven, seven, just the meeting. But we, the tenth is the next one, so we can give it, invite them, that's okay. If everyone's all over it with that. Do we look upon sending them to the board and we just say?
We really wasn't like you were.
I, no one else, no one else could have been there either.
I should look at the proposals and they seem to be, there's some really authority issues in there, so I think we should take some time.
Yeah.
Discuss before, obviously.
Yes.
Like a program start time, if you wanna really dig in.
I don't know if you want to really dig in, but.
There's a lot.
I think a lot of, I think, I think a lot of the authorityier ones are, I mean. I've never, I mean, I only know what I've read, but I didn't know they were not supported by, by the district itself. But, I know that's.
Does either. Things off of that list. That's, that's what keeps you up there.
Right.
Those discussions. All right, thank you, Matt, for doing that. And we will plan on that for our October seventh meeting to have a true chunk of time to discuss the fund for resolutions that are being proposed for this votes, um, to have a meeting on time. Uh, we're, Matt, we are the delegate. And with that, we have a second opportunity for both to be heard. And who would like to come forward at this point? You are welcome to propose.
Your station name? I am Sabrina Bellwatt. And I have two students in the district, one in sixth grade, one in tenth grade. So I am here because when I hear concerns, I like to bring in people that maybe have some power to do something about it. Maybe, I don't know. So, the concerns that have been mumbled have been about the conditions at the satellite fields. In the lower satellite field where the currently soccer, I think they possibly have a spring, well, probably is there, but I'm not really sure. So, the concerns that I have heard have been about large holes. Also large leaves that people have described as crabgrass the size of lettuce. They refer to them as, as lettuce. And when people try to then pull them out, like students while they're playing practice. Then it leaves a large hole. So, there are concerns about safety, ankle injuries, knee injuries. And the rumor is that the board does not want to support weed pillars, pesticides, or whatever needs to remedy this. So, again, I don't know. I hear mumbling, so I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. That way, if there is a solution, that, you know, it can be addressed by the board with the coaches, with the athletic administration. I don't know if anything could even possibly be done for this current playing season because obviously some landscape issues need more time. But again, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that this is a, several people are talking about.
Thank you, Sabrina. I, we, when someone comes up, we don't have a conversation. So we just say, thank you for bringing it to your attention. I believe that as a facilities issue, we can also say, consider agreeing. We might have something that is, it is already on the radar and large, so. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Anyone else have something else? We have a second opportunity for the board to hear.
I just, I just want to, I know that just today, maybe, something went out. Remind people that we are, that they are holding a form of appropriate commission recommendations. I would strongly urge people to give a banner to that opportunity on the nineteenth. Being held virtually, I guess it is, is taking feedback and comments in terms of those recommendations that I did have to share. People give you some background on what the, what the commission's providing the recommendations for, so that way you can get up to speed with, you know, a lot of the commissions doing. But I just wanted to remind people about that, you know, encourage your participation if you're ready.
Good point, thank you. Anything else? You don't, yes, this is the dragon's lay. It's your number October seventh, December nineteenth. And with that, may I like to move this picture? Second, all favor.